Everybody, it's seven o'clock and I'd like to welcome you to the New Bern Board of Aldermen Meeting. At this time, the June 28th meeting will be opened by prayer by Alderman Schabel.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite Pastor Bill Winger to Cavalry Baptist Church to give the prayer, and thank you for joining us this evening.
Let me say first of all, Ms. Schabel, thank you for your faithful service to our city, and especially to our third ward, and we're gonna miss you, and we pray God will bless you with his best.
Thank you.
Our heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege to come to thee tonight. I come on behalf of our mayor, Alderman, and our city. I pray that thou would bless us tonight and bless this meeting with thy presence, thy power, thy protection. Lord, I pray that you'll help these folks with the many difficulties, situations that they face, the wisdom they need. You said if any man lacked wisdom, let him ask of thee, and thou would give to all men liberally and upgrade not. Bless them, bless our country tonight. Thank you for the upcoming Fourth of July and celebration of our birthday. Lord, may we have a real rebirth of freedom in our land. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its own. Matt Quirk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Blackiston.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Schabel.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kenzie.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Hey, everybody's present. The next item is item number three, and this is the announcement of the resignation of Alderman Schabel from Ward Three. And at this time, with much chagrin, that is a part of our agenda tonight. At this time, I'll just turn it over to Alderman Schabel.
Thank you. This is my last speech. I've been writing this speech for over two years. I'm very proud of what our board has accomplished. Some of these include, like, the first night we took office, we were faced with hiring a city manager. I am proud that we unanimously chose Mark Stevens, who continues to do an excellent job. When we took office, we faced a $2.7 million shortfall, which we funded, and we further lowered the budget by $6 million. We did not cut police officers. We addressed their aging fleet needs by ordering 20 police vehicles and additional 10 vehicles this year. All of this was accomplished with no tax increase or decrease in city services. We lowered electric utility rates by voting for the Duke buyout of our assets. We moved the electric utility to Cale Road, that previously sat vacant for four years. We worked with the state to take over the Alfred Cunningham Bridge by New Bern accepting responsibility for some state roads. We joined the Craven 100 Alliance aimed at economic development. The days in has and will continue to be a challenge. Our first action was to foreclose, and unfortunately, somebody bid the tax value. Now we are moving forward with other alternatives. We are building a public restroom downtown. We completed a charter change by streamlining it as to be in line with state statutes. The American Public Power Association recognized New Bern Utilities for our meter automation project. The 2016-17 budget was passed with no tax increase or decrease in city services. Our accomplishments are not ours alone. These occurred because of the hard work of the city manager and his team. City staff worked diligently to make these things happen. I want to thank Mark Stevens and his department heads and their team for always being available and assisting me with the issues. I served as a commissioner on the N-Campo Board, and I thank John Rinn for his leadership as our representative. I have a special place in my heart for the New Bern Police Department. I went to Citizens Police Academy, which I recommend for all citizens, and I served as a police volunteer. I can't say that I know every police officer, but I can name those that I've had the pleasure to work with and learn from. The chief, John Chandler, Denise, Nick, Rhonda, Doug, Mark, Chip, Linda, Ronnie, Aaron, Jason, Todd, Darren, Kevin, J.C., Katrina, Becky, Derek, Billy, Laura, Maria, Paul, David, Willie, Monaco, Ben, Sheldon, Trish, Jerry, Mac, Jennifer, and if I missed anyone, you know who you are. I am proud to have served as an Alderman for the third ward. I really appreciate the many citizens who stopped me and thanked me for my service. It's one of those things that make this job worthwhile. Lots of people offered advice when I took office. Probably the best advice I was given was to cancel my subscription to the Sun Journal. In addition, we have two former officials who continue to spread false information aimed at discrediting our mayor and board. It's a shame that such energy couldn't be directed in a positive way. To the public, I say you do not always believe what you hear or read. There's always more to the story, especially considering some of the sources. Your mayor and Alderman really do work hard to make the best decisions despite the challenges. I really appreciate those of you who took the time to call me when you read or heard something that was troublesome. We had a respectful conversation, and we all came away with a greater understanding of the issue. I thank Mayor Outlaw for his leadership. He and I didn't always agree, but he was always willing to listen to me, as well as explain his reasoning for his position on an issue. I thank my fellow Aldermen, especially those who took the time for rational discussions on our many concerns. I thank my family for their support. I especially thank my husband, Tom. He has been a rock through these two and a half years. Now that our kids are gone, I often joke that my job has given us lots to talk about. Whenever Tom would worry about me, I always told him that I am fine, as long as I have the respect of the people that I respect, and that has remained true. Tom and I have decided to move to Florida. This was not a decision that was made lightly. We visited there in December and considered moving there at the end of my term, and that was our plan. After further discussion, we realized that the yardstick of life is getting shorter. Therefore, we have sold our house and will continue renting into Burne until August the 23rd. I feel that it is better for my ward and the city for me to resign my position now. This will allow for a smooth transition, and it gives me two months to assist the new Aldermen in their new role. New Bern really is a special place, and I have enjoyed my 10 years here. Thank you very much.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw, members of board, with regret, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the letter of resignation from Alderman Pat Schabel effective immediately and relieve her of any further duties at this meeting.
I see.
You have a motion by Alderman Blackiston, second by Alderman White. Does everybody understand the motion, any questions? See, now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston.
Yes.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie.
Yes.
Alderman White.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. Alderman Schabel, I just want to say to you that you've done a great job, and you've taught me a lot about how, as you well know, we not always agree, but I don't know anybody in my life taught me how to, not use the term "coexist," but to get along, and in doing that, New Bern's better for it, because it doesn't matter what the issue was, and it doesn't matter if you prevailed or I did, or if you were right or I was wrong. New Bern has moved forward, and it will move forward, because of the type of consensus you have shown this board in getting along, and the things I've seen you and Tom involved in the community. You know, I'm much agreeing, but very happy for both of you that you're making the next positive move in your life, and you'll be soaring this by all of us.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go to item number four, discussion of replacement for Ward Three Alderman. At this time, I'm gonna ask Attorney Davis to, based on research with the Institute of Government, what is the legal procedure to make sure that it is equitable and transparent, and it gives all the public an opportunity to see that we have done it in the most due diligence, research way to make sure it's done right. Mr. Davis.
Yes, sir. Members of the board, in your agenda packages, I've included two little publications from the School of Government that lay out the mechanisms for the appointment of a new Alderman. The rules are fairly simple. It is the board's prerogative to fill the vacancies, as simple as that. It must be done by a majority vote. There are two basic methodologies to make the appointment. One is your traditional motion and vote. That works well when you have one potential nominee. When you have more than one potential nominee, the School of Government recommends a nomination and ballot method, where appointees are listed on a ballot. Each Alderman has one vote to vote for one of those nominees. The nominee that gets the majority vote will serve in the position. Simple as that, Mayor.
And could you outline the best procedures for doing that? Actually, at this time, does the board have questions or comments?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I've got some comments, too. I've been through a procedure similar, just, and it's just not an overnight thing. The public plays a part, all, back then it was commissioners, but all the people that's on that board plays a part in dealing with that neighborhood, that ward, or that district. Everybody that's on that board has an opportunity to pick someone, or have someone nominated from that district or that ward, and while that's going on, those people are to come before that board, or that committee, and each one of them should tell the reason why they want to be appointed to that board, and while they are doing that, the people, or the community of people from that ward has to be there listening to what's going on, but the board be the ones that pick the best candidate they think that would be chosen to fit that seat. That's not a hard task to do, but it's fair for all the people to be involved in it, especially in that ward or that district. It's not fair that we just go ahead and just start picking people, because it's not, I don't care what nobody says, that's not the way to do it.
Okay, with that in mind, Mr. Davis, from the Institute of Government, a board, when a replacement is needed, a reasonable period of time is zero to 90 days, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Counties have, by statute, 60 days. For whatever reason, the municipal statute doesn't provide a timeframe, so it's just interpreted to be reasonable, so, you know, from zero to 60 to 90 days.
And in the interim period without representation, the representation for that particular ward would probably fall within the mayor and the city manager to try to be the support mechanism for that group while there is no Alderman?
Yes, sir, exactly.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Attorney, is there precedent or a possibility of having a special election for this opening?
I'm not aware of that in the statute. It simply says that the board shall appoint, so I would expect no. I'm not aware of whether there has, you know, been a general election called for that before. I simply don't know.
Thank you.
One question about the balloting. Procedurally, could you outline that a little bit more? Is it a, obviously, correct me if I'm wrong, when the ballot is done, the clerk would probably pronounce publicly what the ballot was by what elected official, but at the same time, prior to the balloting, is it within the confines of the board to enumerate names of potential persons to be the replacement?
Yes, sir. The board would start with a blank ballot, and the board can implement whatever procedure it likes to fill in the potential nominees. Once those nominees are on your ballot, then the board will vote, but your name will appear on your ballot, and once given to the clerk, there'll be, in the minutes, an entry as to which Alderman voted for which nominee.
And hypothetically, if there's a three to two to one, you would re-ballot, and the one would be out, and the three to two, and then it would be re-balloted, is that correct?
Yes, sir. If the board chooses the nomination method, then the board would want to, on the front side, determine how you go about the process to achieve the person with four votes. As the mayor said, it's not uncommon, if you don't have a majority vote for the nominee in the first round, to eliminate the low vote getter, to eliminate the field, to create a chance to get to the four votes.
And from the Institute of Government, is, I know that they say there's two methods, but is there a more approved method of the institute? Do they look more favorably as far as any recourse, as far as any inaccuracies or anything in it? Does one serve the purpose better than the other?
They strongly recommend the nomination method.
The ballot?
The ballot method, absolutely. It's, it just provides a more transparent and fair process, so that, excuse me, when you do the motion and vote method, you're left with one possible outcome, and no one knows for sure if that person's gonna get a majority vote, so what happens is, you get a race to make the second motion for the next possible candidate. So, the nomination and voting method is much more transparent and fair.
Okay. Now, at this time, does the board have questions, comments, or does anybody have any particular ideas to what procedure they would want to do tonight?
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
I'd just like to make this comment, that I want to be certain that all members of the board understand the procedures that have just been described by Mr. Davis, so that there's no confusion after the fact. As Alderman Odom has mentioned, and Mr. Davis has described, it isn't required that we take action tonight, but that might be preferred to go ahead and take action, but I just want to be certain that there's no confusion and no Monday morning quarterbacking after the fact as to how this procedure was conducted, and that it is open, fair, and transparent.
Yes, sir.
So, I just want to make sure that the board is understanding also that it's a selection from the board. This is the board making the decision of the person that's gonna be selected to take Ward Three's seat. So, each member would select a person, and doing the vote would, the number that has the highest number would be the person that would be selected.
Okay, and so, how would the board like to proceed with item number four?
I'd like to nominate a person.
Now, is that what you would call that, a nomination of a person?
Yes, sir. I think the first decision is...
In other words, you would like to know if we're gonna ballot or motion?
Yes, sir.
So, let's first decide if we're going to ballot or have a motion taken. Yes?
Mayor, I would just say, I think it's pretty obvious. There's been enough communication and conversation over the last few days. We know there's more than one candidate, and based on what the attorney recommended, it would be the ballot method, is what I would...
Is that a motion in order on this, sir?
Sure, yes, Mayor.
Okay, now, we have a motion by Alderman Odom to have the ballot method. Is there a second to the motion?
Second. And that second was Mr. Blackiston.
Yes, sir. Let's, to be safe, have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White?
No.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Question.
Yes, sir.
I know we're gonna do it by ballot, but would the candidates and nominees be able to come before us at some time?
Entirely for the board.
It would be the pleasure of the board in form of a motion if, I'll go ahead and say this, I was gonna say it before another time, we do have a petition which everybody on the board has had an opportunity to peruse, that was given to us prior to the meeting, and so, everybody's had a chance to look at this, and is it in order to say who the petition is in favor of?
Sure.
This petition is from Robert Warnersbach of 117 Berlin Loop in New Bern, and this is, I'm writing this tonight, to extol the virtues, achievements, and assets of Bobby Astor. So, we have this petition, and that's a matter of public record at this time. So, now, we have a motion, a second, and, sir, you have questions?
I had that one question, then the, that question, that's a question. Do I want to make a statement before I make a vote? We represent the city, but we represent the residents first that makes up the city. So, I say we need to pay close attention to what the residents want for their community, because we all represent different wards. We need to represent the ward that we're looking to fill the seat for. If the majority of the ward want an individual, that's what we should be looking forward to. I just wanted to say that, not to the people, to the board. So, with that, a yes.
Okay, so, at this time, we have a motion, a yes.
Alderman Blackiston.
Yes.
Motion approved. So, this time, we have a ballot, so...
I'd like to make a statement before I make my call here. Every person has a choice of words of what they want to do, and they should do what they want to do. No one should bully nobody or tell anybody what to do, and they should do what they want to do, and that's what I'm gonna do tonight. I nominate Mitchell, Ms. Mitchell.
And what is that full name, sir?
E.T. Mitchell.
And do we need a motion, a second, and approval of that, or just put that on the ballot?
Yes, sir. Just to be clear, if the board is gonna proceed now with the ballot method, each member of the board has an opportunity to nominate, as a matter of right, a person to appear on the ballot.
Okay. Are there others?
The petition is for Bobby Astor, all right? So, he's already...
Well, now, sir, this is a petition that has been presented. This is not part of an actual part of the board.
Okay, okay. If you're asking for another one, I'd like to nominate Bobby Astor.
Are there other possible replacements for Ward Three at this time? So, at this time, I would declare the ballot closed?
Yes, Mayor, and I know staff is, I see staff writing here, trying to put some names in these ballots for the board.
Okay. And, sir, while that's being done, could you, for the public, explain what's being done?
Yes, Mayor. The staff, not knowing what the board was gonna do tonight, I understand, brought some blank ballots for each of you, and they are filling out each ballot with the two nominees on those ballots. They'll circulate those one each to the board. Each board member has one vote. They'll vote, sign, and return the ballots to the clerk.
One question, sir. Based on our oath of office, you have, at this time, with the ballot closed, you have two nominees. It is, can an elected official abstain from vote, or do they, by oath of office, have to vote on this issue?
That's a fine question, Mayor. That's a fine question.
I mean, abstaining would be a yes, but it would be a yes to the two people, so you really can't do that.
That's the problem, is, in a typical parliamentary procedure, an abstention without a conflict is counted as a yes vote in favor of the motion.
Could a person be abstained, be recused from vote, because they wouldn't actually have a due cause to be recused?
No basis, there's no conflict in...
I just want to make sure before the vote starts.
Yes, sir.
We don't get caught up on that.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
I think earlier, a scenario was given out, if it was like a three, two, one. Now, the ballot's closed, there's two candidates, if it's a three-three vote, can you explain what would happen?
It'd be up to the board. The board could revote tonight. The board could have a cooling off period and reconvene at a later date and revote, but ultimately, it has to be a majority vote. So, if that does happen tonight, you can take that up and decide to take a break, to revote, or postpone.
I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I have one comment.
Yes, sir.
We have two nominees. I only see one nominee in the audience. I think it's for us to nominate someone that's not here, to say, to have a, to speak to us in reference to why they want this position, because we had a campaign for this position, and I understand the way it works that we vote, but at least the individual could have been here to voice their desire. Am I missing the other nominee? Am I missing any of the other nominees? Since we're not, I at least ask that we allow Mr. Astor to come...
Is that a motion on your part?
Yes, that we allow Mr. Bobby Astor.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's a motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman White. Does everybody understand the motion? Yes, sir.
Just the candidates speak, correct?
Just candidates.
How long?
Four minutes.
Okay.
Okay, let's have a roll call on that, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
No.
Okay, at this time, Mr. Davis, procedurally, is it okay for Mr. Astor to come up and approach the podium and say his name, address, and whatever he'd like to do for four minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. My name is Bobby Astor. I live at 200 Baden Court in Taberna, and I've resided there since 1998. I've also, as you all know, I'm the retired fire chief of the city of New Bern with 36 years of servicing, and all of you know my credentials. I'm sure you've heard them and you've read them. I submitted them with my letter. I'll be glad to tell you that I am very proud of my career with the city of New Bern. I served as fire chief, and I was the youngest career fire chief ever in the state of North Carolina when I was appointed fire chief, which I'm proud of that. But I also served as acting city manager under several managers, including Mr. Stevens. I was also the interim public works director, and filled that position while keeping my position as fire chief for about 18 months. So, I'm also, I'm very proud of everything that I have performed with the city of New Bern. Now, again, you know my credentials, I don't need to repeat them, but I will say this. Mr. Kenzie may comment about it's his choice, and it is his choice, but it's also the people of Ward Three's choice, and the people of Ward Three have spoken. I'm sure you've received, all of you have received several emails, all of you have received several phone calls, and supporting me. There's been meetings that I've had with the homeowners of Taberna, there's been email conversations taking place in Carolina Colors, as well as Old Town. So, it is your choice, but it's the, you should really consider what the citizens of Ward Three want, and I would ask them here that's supporting me today to just stand up and let you see who's here supporting me today. These are people from Carolina Colors and from Ward Three, from Taberna and everywhere else, and we were kind of under the gun to submit a petition. It was, we did not have a tremendous amount of time to work on this campaign, if you would. As you know, I was told on Thursday that she was resigning, Ms. Schabel was resigning on Tuesday, and Ms. Schabel and I have had some several email conversations back and forth about how this will take place, the transition time, that she will be here for extra two months, and so on and so forth, but anyway, members, please, remember, it's the Ward Three. I would be representing Ward Three, and that's who you need to listen to, I think. I think you want the will of the people, which have, I'm sure, just think in your head how many phone calls you may have had, or how many emails you may have had supporting me versus the other candidate. Thank you very much. I would love to have the position, you know, I asked for this position, and I would love to serve and to represent the city of New Bern, and especially Ward Three. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, at this time, are the ballots ready?
They are.
Mayor, while the clerk is looking at that, members of the board, you want to entertain a motion this evening about when you would like the new nominee, the new alderman, to take office. So be thinking about that, because I would recommend that you do that by a motion and vote.
You want to do that now?
Well, you can do it now.
Is it presumptuous in that this thing might lock up and be three-three, and you can't break a tie, and then you don't have to wait, or?
Well, irrespective of the vote, I think it would be helpful just for staff to understand how long they might need to cover that seat.
Okay. How exactly, what would be the pleasure of the board, as to when they would like an alderman for the third ward to seek the replacement post? First meeting in July, or?
And I mention that because I know staff would want to prepare a swearing-in, et cetera.
Yes.
First meeting in August.
You'd like August?
First meeting in August.
Is that your motion?
Attorney was saying we'd do something swear, can we swear in in July?
You can swear first name whenever you'd like. I just would suggest that staff needs time to prepare.
I would say August.
Is that the first meeting in August?
I said first week in August.
And that is a motion?
That is a motion for me.
And is there a second to the motion?
A second.
We have a motion and a second that the replacement for the third ward would be seated, officially sworn in at the first meeting in August. Does everybody, everybody understand the motion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's have a roll call, because we don't have everybody together on this. Let's start with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
No.
Alderman White?
Are we talking about the first week in August?
Yeah.
I say yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
No.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
No.
Okay. Well, let's, if it's okay, let's just hold on to that and do this and go back, and somebody's going to...
Perfectly fine, Mayor.
We can slink here, change the vote. Go ahead. Or actually, if the motion fails, and we'll get a new motion? Yes.
Okay, Alderman Blackiston has voted for E.T. Mitchell. Alderman Taylor voted for Bobby Astor. Mayor Outlaw voted for E.T. Mitchell. Alderman Kinsey voted for E.T. Mitchell. Alderman White voted for Bobby Astor. And Alderman Odom voted for E.T. Mitchell. So that's four to two. Four for Mitchell.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll wait for the crowd to leave.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Ash. Okay, at this time, is there a motion as to when they would like the replacement alderman to assume office?
Yes, Mayor. We made a decision tonight as a board, and I believe it was almost unanimous, except for Alderman White, to go through this nomination process and to choose a replacement tonight. I would have been completely content with waiting a little while, but if we're going to make this decision tonight, I don't see a need to wait until August to have that person sworn in. So I make a motion, Ms. E.T. Mitchell, considering that she fits the legal criteria or what have you, be sworn in at our next regular scheduled meeting, which is July 12th.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Blackiston, that the new alderman be assume office on July 12th. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Make pardon?
Aye.
Okay. Were you for or against, sir?
Yes.
You're against? Okay, so that's four to two. Is that good? Do you want a roll call on that?
If the clerk is satisfied, that there's a majority.
Are you satisfied, Madam?
Alderman Taylor, what is your vote?
Uh, no.
Against.
And Alderman White? Okay, is there anything else I haven't do in item four at this time? At this time, we're going to go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, there's only one item on the consent agenda. I move we approve the minutes for June 14th, 2016.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. This time, we'll go to item number six. Consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment to close out the following grant and capital projects funds.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Multiple items here, happy to go over them all. I'm going to highlight them real quickly here. 2014 Justice Assistance Grant, that is to establish a grant fund in the amount of $15,240. That was done on October 28th, 2014. That was used to purchase two K9s and the vehicle that, and equipment that is necessary for the K9 and the training aids. Those purchases are complete, and the grant fund is to be closed. The second one is the 2013 Urgent Repair Program Grant. October 15th of 2013, the board adopted an ordinance to establish a $75,000 grant fund that provided emergency housing repairs to low and very low-income residents. Final cost and revenues came in at $37,493, less than the projected cost. Now that these funds have been expended, the grant fund needs to be closed. The third item is the Radio System Equipment Project Fund. January 11th of 2011, this was to replace the city's aging radio system. Project fund was established for $4,342,697. The final project cost and revenues came in eighty, came in $87,589 under budget. Residual equity transfers of $10,108 to the general fund, $1,060 to the water fund, and $1,909 to the electric fund will be made, because all of them, different funds contributed to the cost of that project. Item number four, Elizabeth Avenue Safe Routes to School Phase Two. The board adopted an ordinance for Phase Two of Elizabeth Avenue Safe Routes to School Grant in the amount of $120,000. The project is complete, the grant fund should be closed. The final cost and revenues were $22,789, less than the projected cost. The final item is the Cal Road Project Fund. This was a project ordinance that was established for $1,636,000 for the relocation of public utilities and warehouse that was adopted on the 14th of May, 2014. The project is now complete. It came in $2,819 under budget. The small residual equity will be transferred to the electric fund, and the project fund will be closed out.
Board have questions?
Mayor?
Mr. Stevens, on the radio system equipment project?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure I just missed it, but it says it's $87,589 under budget, and if those various transfers, if I add them up, I don't get $87,589, is there? What am I missing there?
Ask. I need to do a little bit of research on that, to be honest with you. I'm not 100% sure. I believe that there are, that project was funded through financing, so anything residual would have gone to the individual funds and would have covered other costs.
So we've got, just, I want to make sure from my, we've got general fund, we've got water and electric.
Yes, sir.
I would assume that sewer probably, even if it's in there, it's not going to be a big portion.
Was that one that had some next sale rebates on it? If we closed it out by a certain time, and we got certain credits on that one?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if that was part of it. I think the credits were a couple hundred thousand bucks, as I recall, so I don't know.
There were some credits associated with that.
Okay, any further questions? Did, I hear a motion on this. No motion at this time.
I'll make a motion, we adopt budget ordinance amendment to close out the grant and capital projects funds as listed.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, consider adopting a final budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year 2015-16, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Long description here, but this budget amendment actually encompasses several things to close out the year. The final budget ordinance for fiscal year 15-16 realigns our revenues to equal our appropriations. With regards to general fund amendments are made to acknowledge additional costs for sanitation and redistribute the funds within various divisions of Parks and Recreation and the Finance Departments. Those are included in your packet, and you can detail what those amounts are. The amendment also transfers funds for the East Front Riverwalk Project, the Downtown Information Center Project, which is the property, or the project that we look to do over here that was associated with the sale of the Dunn Building, and the extension of the roadway into the Stanley White Recreation Center on Third Avenue. This, these will be for general capital project funds. It also recognizes the new accounting requirements for the Emergency 911 Support Program, where we realigned that in our budget in a different way. And the related revenue increase and transfer of the residual amount that came from the Emergency Telephone System Fund. It transfers that equity into the grant and project funds that have now, and the projects that we just closed. The water and sewer fund budgets are amended to also meet the actual payment in lieu of taxes that is due, as well as to transfer money from the water fund to the Water Resources Operations Facility Improvements Fund. That actually is going to be coming to you here shortly with the next item. The electric fund is also amended to account for the payment in lieu of taxes that is due and the costs associated with the, within the Communications Division to transfer the equity from the grant and project funds that have been closed out. As stated, there's a memo that's included in your packet that details all of this action as item number seven in your agenda packet. And myself and Mr. Savatelli will answer any questions if you have.
Only have, only question I have, I want to make sure, refresh myself on the newest valuations and everything, the methodology for payment in lieu of taxes. It with, did the valuations change? Or did they, actually, I remember from several meetings ago, we had a discussion about that. And give me the formula again for the pilot?
Yes, sir. Essentially, we take the gross, the gross book value of the assets for each of these individual funds, divided by 100, multiply times our prevailing tax rate for the year, which is 41 cents. What we finished out the year with as of FY, is it 6/3015, was slightly higher on each of these, each of these individual funds. So therefore, when the calculation was done, additional monies were due over to the general fund for the pilot.
And just for planning for the 16-17 budget, and the rate having to change to be revenue neutral, are you going to adjust the valuations of those assets? Or are you going to remain? Because if you are, the payment in lieu of taxes is going to be considerably more, which I already have a problem with pilots, anyway.
Yes.
So are you going to adjust the valuation of the asset?
No, the valuation of the asset is based on, is based on book, based on the book value, so when those, when the rate changes, then the amount of pilot does also change. So that would be something up to the board, if the board wishes to look into that and possibly, and not transfer the same amount of pilot in this coming year. We can look into that and provide the commission.
And to meet local government commission requirements, does it have to meet that formula? Can it just be a reasonable figure out of the air? Or does it have to be based on the tax rate?
I would have to do a little bit of research for you on that.
Okay, thanks, sir. I'm going to put you on the spot. We're about that one next year. Does anybody have any further questions? And does anybody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion adopting final budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year 2015-16.
Second.
You have a motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Blackiston, is there further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight, consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for the General Capital Projects Fund. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. As you know, we have several projects, or multiple years, that we have projects that go over into the next fiscal year. Generally, what happens is, is when we have projects that may extend across over fiscal years, we'll establish general capital project funds for those particular projects. This amendment is the transfer of funds from the general fund to establish these project funds for three items. The Stanley White Recreation Center, Third Avenue Entrance Extension, Third Avenue Extension, a $75,000 project fund for the East Front Riverwalk, which is, we just recently acquired an easement from the Sudan Sheraners to have for their property that is adjacent to the traffic circle, so that we can further extend the Riverwalk in the future. So that's establishing that project fund. And a $50,000 project fund for the Downtown Information Center, which was part of the sale of the Dunn Building. As you will recall, some of that money was designated as use for the public improvement that was associated with the sale of the Dunn Building. So this budget amendment actually establishes those three general capital project funds.
And what are you going to do if by chance, are you going to do another budget amendment if the, if the $50,000 on the Downtown Information Center exceeds that?
Yes, we would come back to you. Once we get the quotes back, what this does is establishes the fund, gets the money set aside, and then what we would do at that point is come back with the budget amendment. Once we have the final construction estimates and quotes, we can, we can get that worked out.
And technically speaking, the $100,000 and the $75,000 are based on fund balance, and the $50,000 is based on the contractual arrangement?
It's still fund balance, because when we sold the Dunn Building, all of those, all of those proceeds went into the fund balance.
Okay, good, good. Okay. Board have questions? What would be the pleasure of the board on item number eight?
I'd like to make a motion adopting budget ordinance amendment for the General Capital Project Fund.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Blackiston, is there further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine, consider adopting an ordinance establishing a capital project fund for the Water Resources Operations Facility Improvements, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Fiscal year 15-16 water fund budget provided for project improvements that were associated with the Water Resources Operations Facility that's located at 2825 Neuse Boulevard. The amount that we had budgeted for that was $150,000. However, some issues have been discovered that increased the estimated project cost to $425,000. These additional funds are planning to be found from the reallocation of existing funds that are within the actual operations budget. The project will not be completed during the fiscal year 15-16. Obviously, therefore, the proposed project fund needs to be established for these improvements. And Mr. Savatelli's here, but also Jordan's here to detail any kind of reasons for the project costs and some of the problems that they found out there, if you have any questions regarding that.
Does the board have questions?
Yeah, I got one.
Yes, sir.
The big difference of...
Oh, I'll let Jordan, Jordan can detail all of that for you.
Yes, sir, Alderman Taylor. It's actually a combination of a lot of things. The original project had a very small scope of doing a small addition onto the building in order to accommodate some additional administration space, as well as some shower facilities for our sewer crews especially, improved restrooms and shower facilities. What we found, unfortunately, is when we got out there and started evaluating the building and how we're going to make tie-ins, how everything's going to connect, it was like peeling an onion. Every time we looked at something, we found more problems. The original building was constructed in the 1950s as a treatment plant. It was a plant-type facility. At some point in the 70s, it was transitioned into a makeshift office of some sorts, once the facility was no longer needed as part of the water treatment process. And it was never really looked at since. I mean, a little paint every once in a while here, I think we may have changed the carpet a couple of times. But the building itself, as an entirety, was really never designed or built or set up to operate in any aspect for the way we use it today. So as we started looking at things, we found a lot of problems, like the electric service isn't big enough to accommodate any more load. We found a lot of lead-based paint issues we need to try to get remediated, looking at making tie-ins to the existing roof. And the, the way the, the way the facility was built back in the fifties, the codes were a lot different. So as you bring new, the new addition on and you're looking at adding the space, you're having to bring not only the new space, but a lot of the areas you're tying into up to some of the injury code requirements. So you're getting some insulation costs. So it, it's a lot of little things that really added up to the additional costs. And at the same time, what's happened along Neuse Boulevard in the last, I'd say, five, six, seven, eight years, you're starting to see a real good redevelopment of some of the older properties down there. As a matter of fact, the property right next door to this facility was, was the old bread factory. It's been repurposed and redeveloped, looks very nice in the last six months. Properties on the corners around us. As part of this plan, we're also looking at doing some exterior facade work to kind of clean the property up a little bit and bring it more into harmony with the development. It's kind of, you know, redeveloping along, along the corridor. We don't want five years from now to be, the city facility to be the eyesore of the corridor either. So that, that's some of the other additional costs that kind of added to that. Is while we're there doing work, we want to kind of accomplish all of these things at the same time. And we were fortunate enough through the budget process this year to be able to save a little money on other things to, you know, have enough money in, you know, in the remaining budget for fiscal year fifteen sixteen to cover the additional costs.
Well, I'll also add real quick that, you know, as, as Jordan alluded to and, and that the wastewater, or the, the water treatment plant, it used to be an old water treatment plant. Number one, it used, nineteen fifties, it probably used to be on the outskirts of town. And now with the redevelopment, things have really kind of developed around it and a lot of things are starting to really improve in that area. Additionally, this is not like a, the warehouse, the old warehouse site, the old electrical generation plant that we can kind of, you know, pick up, pack up and move somewhere else. We have so much infrastructure on this site as far as tanks and the way that our well systems integrate with one another so that we provide water to our customers, so much pipe work that it would be a major, major significant cost to reach, to change all of that and reallocate that to some other location. So we're there to stay at this particular location and utilizing it as existing offices is probably one of the better uses. So at some point or another, regardless of whether it's now or if it's five, ten, fifteen years down in the future, we're going to have to do something to this particular project. And we've, we, like as Jordan alluded to, we had the money in the budget from savings this year operationally to be able to set that money into the project fund to accomplish this, this renovations at this time.
Alderman Odom.
Mr. Stevens, you and Ms. Hughes, we have discussed that spaghetti underneath the ground, that there's just no way to unwound that. Jordan, I guess my question would be is for the improvements and the additions that you're talking about making to the facility, is it necessary that that level of personnel is located on that site? Or could the first part of the roadway, I guess, portion of that could be redeveloped, leaving the underground utilities?
The, the problem being the, the buildings themselves, because it was old plant where the pipes coming in, pipes going out, they're literally built on top of the pipe. We've got thirty-inch pipes that run up through the floor in places and are capped off and i- it's a maze. I, I would find it very, there, there's always a possibility and always potential. I'd probably find it very difficult to see that developed for another use that wasn't city-specific. I think you'd be, there'd be a lot of challenges in trying to say develop, lease it out to private development or commercial development of some sort. Just because you're pretty limited in what you can do as far as tearing up and rebuilding. And there again, you, i- it's a critical part of our infrastructure. All of our water from our two supply sources comes through that, through the old pipe network that's under the buildings. So if, you know, you, you sold it or leased it to a commercial entity, something went wrong, it's a major problem. And that's all the water for our fifteen thousand customers comes through there and goes out of there. It's like this real crucial point of, of our, our system. And as much as possible, we want to try to control what's going on, not only with the pipes, but the area around the pipes to make sure that, you know, we can protect that as much as we can. And I think it would just lend itself probably to be a very expensive redevelopment-type project. If you tried to transition it into a, a different use than it is, you'd probably almost, you'd probably have to do something very substantial to, to get the facilities where they were, I guess, commercial-ready.
And, and you mentioned the, the property next door that's been renovated, looks very well. Is the exterior of our property going to have some facade improvements?
We, we, me and the architect have, we talked about several options. We, we've talked about some, you know, some just simple on the front. We've talked about, it's got a nice brick. The problem is it's, it's been kind of shrouded in some other things, some old, you know, aluminum awdings and old utility lines across the front that haven't been used for thirty years. There, there's a lot of options there we can look at of stripping everything off, cleaning it up, modernizing a little bit. It's a little disjointed now where the building's trying, you know, it's, it's actually two buildings now that don't tie together very well, plus the addition we're going to add. Making all that look a little more monolithic along the front would, would help out a lot too. So we, we got some options to try to bring it into harmony with what's happening in the rest of the corridor. It's kind of the plan.
Alderman Taylor.
Yes, part two, Jordan.
Yes, sir.
First of all, you, you're doing, you and this section are doing a great job, committee on the job you're doing. I have a question, like Chief and I know, when you're on the range and you're trying to qualify and you missed the whole target, it's not in the, not in the site, it's in the actual person itself. So what I'm saying is, are we, it's about a three hundred dollar, three hundred thousand dollar difference. Are, what are we making sure that we, if this doesn't happen again down the line?
Well, it, it's really.
Are we using saved money from elsewhere, but what if we didn't have?
Sure, we, we could take a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we could build something today that serves the purpose, I think, of what the intention was in the budget this year. We, we can get the shower facilities we needed out there in some way, shape or form for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The problem is when we, when we're out there and the more we're looking on site, we were identifying other problems. So really, the initial scope has, has grown quite a bit. And the, the point of that, and I think Mark made a very good point, that at some point, you need to address these other issues. And what better time than when you, when you've got a construction project going on? Let's, let's capture everything you need to do in one project. And it's worked out well that we, like I said, we've got savings in the budget to be able to incorporate, incorporate that now without any impact on fund balance or rates or anything like that. So the, the timing's appropriate to, to capture all the issues in a single project. You know, back to your question, Alderman Taylor, we, you know, it, it's really not how far off we got from the original, from the original project is. I think that the scope of the project has, has grown quite a bit.
I would, I would like to echo Alderman Taylor's concern and say, unless this is time-sensitive, and if it's the pleasure of the board, and it, being in Alderman Kinsey's ward, I would, I personally would like for Alderman Kinsey to hit up a, an ad hoc to go out and, I, I've read these, these numbers and I've gone through them, I know the building. But I, I would be more than glad to be on the ad hoc with you. And you, you pick, it's your ward, another Alderman, and the, the three of us or, or two other Aldermen go out with the city manager and Mr. Hughes and whoever else on staff and take a look at this and then report back to the board. I'm a little concerned about that kind of money. On that, in that particular location, I want to make sure it's properly value-engineered and it's the right fit for that, that lot. But that's just my opinion.
Mr. Hughes, when is this a good date for you this week?
Number one, is this a time-sensitive item? It, it's.
There, there is no.
We're talking about having a meeting the end of the week and getting back in the next meeting, having a decision on it.
I'm looking at meeting on Friday.
I'll say the, the time sensitivity of it is probably there. Just the reason being is because this is a year-end closeout. What would happen is, is if this doesn't get approved tonight, what you would do is you would take from fund balance and establish this same project fund during the next fiscal year. Essentially, what happens is, is whatever savings that the water fund has for the end of this fiscal year would transfer into the water fund, fund balance.
And that would just make the fund balance better, right?
It won't make a big, you're just moving that money over there.
It, it just, what would happen is, is we'll temporarily put it in our, our savings account. And then, once we put it in our savings account, next fiscal year, whenever we go through this process, we'll take it out of the savings account and then put it into this project fund. So as far as completing it with the fiscal year budget amendment, it is a little time-sensitive, but it's not to say that we can't do it during next fiscal year. We'll just have to do it a different way.
So can we meet on Friday, maybe noon time?
Well, when you have an item, it's got to be voted down or, or whatever. So, you know, it's, I'm, I don't make motions in seconds. I just run a meeting. So whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Can we table it till the next meeting, city attorney?
I think if you're going to wait, I would assume that you probably just, just let it fail tonight. If you, if it's your choice to wait rather than tabling it, because we will not be able to approve this item in the way it's written here on the meeting in July. Because it, it needs to come, it will, it will have to change the wording so that it comes from fund balance. So the way it's written specifically right now, it would not, it's coming from actual stuff that we have saved throughout this year. So if it is the intent of the board to set aside the ad hoc to review this with staff, then you probably need to go ahead and fail it for tonight.
I mean, we want to physically do it on the side.
And I, I would make it, if you want to do the ad hoc, that, you know, you do the review and then potentially bring it back up at a future.
I have a question for Jordan. Jordan, how accurate are these numbers here that you've given us tonight to, to find, to do this work?
The, the architect's estimate was, was attached to the information that was provided, and then I think JR passed that along in the agenda package. You'll see, those numbers are actually quite a bit higher than, than the budget number we recommended. And talking to the architect, we've been able to kind of back some of those numbers out, talk about some different options, things that we can do internally with our own staff that would cut that cost down as well, trying to value-engineer that as much as possible.
So if we had those numbers there, it would probably look a little better to, to what the guys are looking at.
Well, there's a big difference in the two. I mean, if, if you go straight off the architect's numbers, I, I think if, if memory serves me, I, I think it was six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. What was his term key estimate. You know, we, we carefully went through that, found things that we can certainly live without, ways we could do things a little different, work that we can do in-house and, and got to a more, what I think is a more reasonable number for the, the project we're looking to perform.
So what's the board going to do on this? Do you want to prove it? Do you want to table it?
How can we let it fail for the lack of a second?
I think, I think it would probably be just as easy to say, we would like for the ad hoc group to re-establish this and to meet with staff to, to revisit this particular item and then just don't take it up altogether.
Mr. Tony, would you want to vote on that?
There's no, there's no motion that's presumed to fail.
And who would you like on your committee? It doesn't have to be me. I'm just volunteering and if somebody else does it, you.
Do I have any volunteers tonight?
I mean, that's a very important quarter. I personally, with, with as much as planning and inspections, I'm looking to see these quarters look right. I want to make sure it's the.
Mr. White, would you be available?
Congruent improvement that, that's going to blend in and.
I don't know at the moment. Would you be available, Mr. Odom? On Friday? We're looking at Friday, probably maybe around noon time. Is that a good time for you, Jordan?
Yes, sir, that, that'll be fine.
This Friday, high noon, is, is that good for you, Mr. Odom?
Let him check what you're asking.
Flip the, you, you over there to Odom. He's waiting to see.
I'm trying to figure out too.
Okay.
I'll tell you.
Mr. Stevens, are you available?
Uh, I believe so, sir. I'll, let me check as well real quick. This Friday, which will be July first, I'm available.
Okay.
I'm not available.
I can do it.
Uh, what about you, Mr. Taylor? Will you be available? What about you, Mr. Blackiston? Will you be available?
You got Mr. Odom. Is that enough?
It does have to be me, it certainly is.
No, I mean, you, I think your point is well taken, Mayor, and if you got Alderman Odom, I don't want, we've got, that's three, that's as many as you can have. But if you didn't have.
No, it's just Mr. Odom and I.
And the mayor.
And the city manager.
And the mayor.
And, and you can come?
As long as it's not four of them.
You can come.
Um, the one thing that, again, I want to stress, Mr. Hughes, and this is a thing I think fiscally we need to visit, is, you know, we have a vested interest there with the, is that a two million gallon storage?
Four.
It's four. And we're going to be there for the long haul. And with, with the improvements that people are putting a lot of money in around there, we might want to spend a million dollars there. I don't know. But I think that we want to be good neighbors and we want to be the right fit. And if you could, any and all, alternative A, B, and C on, on elevations and anything that you got in mind to kind of help us navigate through that. So who's going to be on your committee?
You, Mr. Odom, the manager, Jordan, and myself.
I'll, I'll make sure we got, I, I'll make sure I reel everybody's expectations in. I, I will promise you by Friday, I will not have, you know, a series of elevations and alternates. But I think it'd be a great idea to get your input. I'd love to have, you know, some, some board input, some more community input on maybe what, what the ultimate project would look like and what you think would best serve, not only our needs, but the community's needs.
I think also it'd probably be advisable for us, I'll get with Mr. Savatelli and we will get the current financial state of the water fund because ultimately that's where the funds would come from. So as far as our days of cash on hand, I know our, our last time we checked, the, the water fund was in a very good position from a, from a fund standpoint. So we would be able to potentially use cash reserves or fund out and be able to do some of that work.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Jordan, I have, I have a question. This is, this is separate from, from the issue that's on, that's on the table. Just a question. At our recent public safety and security review, I asked a question about, based on our estimated consumption rates, what, what is our freshwater storage capacity for the city?
Uh, we get, just in tanks alone, we get a little over nine million gallons. And, and just in tanks between ground storage tanks and elevated storage tanks, our average consumption, depending on the time of year, is between three and a quarter and three and a half. So a little less than three days of, of basically in the tank.
You said that's three million gallons?
Y- yes, sir. Our average consumption on, depending on the time of year, runs anywhere between three point two five million gallons per day and about three and a half million gallons per day. So with nine million gallons in, in a tank, we have somewhere between two and a half and three million gallons in the tanks between, just varies on what time of year it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other issues concerning item number nine? Moving on to item number ten. Thank you, Ms. McHughes. Consider calling for motion to conduct the July nineteen twenty sixteen work session at the Public Works Facility located at thousand four South Glen Burney Road. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. As you recall, at our meeting on the twelfth of April two thousand sixteen, Alder, Alderman Kinsey inquired about the possibility of having our work session somewhere in his ward or actually the various wards, and I think he would, offered up his ward first. So at that point, I think we announced at the May twenty-fourth meeting that we will be holding the July work session at the Public Works Department on Glen Burney. So this motion is to conduct, sorry, is calling for us to have that meeting and specifically located at the Public Works Facility at one thousand four South Glen Burney Road. And that needs to be made as a motion and seconded by the board.
So move.
Second. Motion by Alderman Kinsey, seconded by Alderman White. Is there further discussion? See you none. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. Yes, sir.
I think it was.
Was it Odom?
It was Alderman Odom that seconded, I believe.
Yes.
Thank you, sir, for that correction. Uh, let's go to item number eleven, appointments. Start with Alderman Odom.
Yes, sir, Mayor. There are a couple of that march openings on the Police Civil Service Board. And I would like to nominate for consideration to the board, Mr. Phil Childery. Mr. Childery is, he's a resident of Prairie Forest in Ward Six. He's retired captain from the Henrico Sheriff's Department. He was also an officer with the Henrico Police Department. He has a pretty impressive resume from a military background where he served in the U.S. Army as Special Forces. So I'd like to nominate him for one of those agencies.
Second. Motion by Alderman Odom, seconded by Alderman Taylor. Is there further discussion? See you none. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. The motion carries. Did you have other appointments?
No, sir, that's all.
Alderman White.
Yeah, well, I, I got one appointment, an appointment that I made the last, I guess, last meeting we had. I'm sticking by, I appointed Mr. Bellamy. And I, he received a letter and I get a statement back saying that he is not eligible because he's not in my ward. I also asked his statement, asked to have paperwork dealing with everybody that was appointed and those that were appointed, if they were not, if the person appointed them to that position and they was not in their ward, then for Mr. Bellamy not be on that committee, then I asked for everyone else that was appointed by somebody else, appointed by the Aldermen and wasn't in that ward, I asked for everyone to be removed.
Okay, can we look into that and make sure the validity of the, the present members? I'm not expecting that to be done tonight, but maybe by next meeting so that we could, would that be agreeable with you, sir? would that be agreeable with you, sir?
Well, it was agreeable when I first said it, uh, maybe about a month ago, but we are, we still haven't gotten that yet. I'm still hold on to it. I'm not backing off from it. I, I've known of, uh, some other people that was appointed and I don't think they was in the, in the ward, but they was appointed. So this gentleman I, I picked and I thought that he would be much more suitable to help the community and, uh, he's been kicked to the curb. So hey, I, if I appointed, I'm going to stick with him right to the end. I want, I want proof of the rest of people that was appointed. And I used to be able to look at a sheet, I had a sheet where I could look at and tell everybody was appointed and that. And the only reason I did that, only reason I went out of my ward and appointed that person is because I the one came up with the rule and, and wanted the policy to be, wanted for each one of us to be able to do that, uh, six, seven years ago. And because people weren't following the rule and everybody was picking somebody out of one particular ward. So I, I, I didn't think that was fair. So when I saw other people doing what they was doing, this time I decided to do that and I want to see what was going to happen. So I see what's going to happen, so now I want to see everybody that was appointed.
We will, uh, I, I work with clerk. We will, all the, all the different boards have different appointing procedures as far as where they come from, whether they're at large, whether the board selects them at large, whether it's specific to the ward. So the clerk and I will work to get that information and all of the appointees and their, their physical address and who made the appointment to ensure that all of the, uh, items have been made.
I understand that large. I have, I have any problem with that at all. All I'm saying is that we're going to abide by the rules and I tried to abide by the rules and I did. This is maybe the second time I've done it. And the first time, nobody said anything. I'm saying because the other people were still doing it. But this time I, I picked a gentleman that is pretty sound, so, uh, the committed, uh, whoever it is, I have to deal with that person. And if you don't want to deal with them, uh, it's going to be just talk.
Okay, sir, and when can you do that?
Uh, we will have that information. Uh, we'll put it in, uh, in the form of a, a report back to you and have it ready for your next meeting.
Well, would you maybe, and I don't mind sitting in and helping out, if you're going to have a little mini workshop with Alderman White, I'll be more than glad to come down and, um, in any way I can facilitate.
Sure.
Getting to the answers Alderman White needs, I'll be glad to be a part of that. Or if, if you guys want to just work with Alderman White and get him satisfied on it, then we can go from there.
If I see it and, uh, it looks good to me, then I'm satisfied.
Great.
If I don't see it, I mean, if I see it and it doesn't look right, you know, I won't be satisfied. I'm just looking for some, some closure, I guess, you know, everybody, oh, man. My, my mother used to say, if you couldn't say nothing good about anybody, don't say nothing at all. I'm trying not to say nothing, but it's kind of hard. I've been hard-headed all my life, you know, so we're going to do the best we can to work this out.
Would it be too much problem maybe to run through the different boards that we have and give a cursory kind of rundown of what the qualifications are if they, if they're at large ward-wise or whatever and, and distribute that to Alderman just so we're...
We already have that compiled in a spreadsheet.
Yeah?
The one board that Alderman White's referring to.
Yeah.
Is the Community Development Advisory Board. That board is specific according to Development Services to specific.
Do you, do you know, is that set up where that, that's a, a general statute or is it something that we can amend?
Maybe something you can amend.
This block, if you want to make a comment?
Yes, can I answer the question? Um, the C D Act was, is a requirement of the C D B G grant. Each Alderman appointed a representative from their ward. Each Alderman had their applicant fud, an actual application. So we do have that information. I've emailed that information, I believe, to, um, Alderman White, um, when I heard that there was some confusion about it, but the rules are spelled out. Each ward must have a representative on this committee.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information. Um, did you, did you have any other, uh, appointments tonight?
No, sir, I don't have any.
Okay, Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir, I don't have any, sir.
Alderman Taylor?
No, sir.
Alderman Blackson?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, we're going to go through the attorney's report.
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
And the city manager's report?
Uh, I actually have several items, so if you bear with me a few minutes, uh, Mayor. Um, all of you, uh, most, if you requested a physical copy of the approved budget, uh, that is included, uh, it's been provided to you there. If you wanted the electronic, uh, obviously we can get that to you. It's all, everybody has access to it on our website, so anytime you're away from it, you have the ability to, to get in and look at our budget, uh, through the web. Also, I wanted to point out that our charter was approved. We had our charter amendment, uh, that was submitted to our state representatives. Uh, that was approved last week, uh, and finally enacted into law as of yesterday. Uh, so wanted to make sure and bring that to your attention. Also wanted to, uh, request permission of the board to send a letter, uh, Mayor, if you want to sign it as well, uh, thanking our representatives for pushing that through. I think that would be a good kudos, uh, to, to, to thank them for that. Uh, so, uh, if, if the board's okay with that, I'll draft up the letter and get that sent over to them, thanking them for their support. Um, the, uh, Fourth of July coming up, I'm sure probably I'm stealing maybe somebody's thunder, but I want to make sure and make everyone aware, uh, we will be celebrating Fourth of July at two different locations this year. Um, we actually have, uh, the, uh, Marine Corps Band that's coming to, uh, Union Point Park, uh, and, uh, they will be performing there along with various activities. Uh, and then also, uh, we will be shooting fireworks off at our same location, Lawson Creek Park. It will open up, uh, to the public, uh, around six P M., is that correct? I think, actually Thurman had to go take care of his mother at night, but six P M., the park will open up, uh, to, um, uh, the public, uh, for viewing of the fireworks there. Uh, people are encouraged to bring their picnic blanket and hang out and, and enjoy the fireworks show. Um, so I wanted to make sure and point that out. Uh, the final item that I have is, uh, I wanted to, uh, if it's okay with the board, to ask Chief Summers to come up. Uh, as you know, we have our National Night Out event coming up, uh, about a month and a week or two away. It's usually the, uh, first Tuesday in August, so Chief wanted to, uh, detail that real quick.
Correct. National Night Out is the, uh, August the second, I believe, that's the first Tuesday in August, and we're really excited about this year. When we started going to neighborhoods, I think almost five years ago now, we started with ten communities. This year, so far, we have twenty-three communities and how we're going to do that? We're scratching our head, but the communities are really excited and energized. We will give you more details as to the, uh, routes and the times of the events as we get closer. We're still planning, so look forward to it.
Thank you, sir, Chief. Does anybody have questions?
One question. Are you? Union Point, not you, Chief, uh, City Manager, I'm saying, thank you. Uh, Union Point, the Marine Corps Band, what time? I missed that.
Um, I think was it five thirty?
Six. Six.
Six. Uh, sorry, Colleen's.
Six to seven thirty.
Six to seven thirty. Uh, so, uh, show up, the Marine Corps Band, six to seven thirty, they will be playing. Uh, obviously, uh, the park will be open, uh, to the public all day long. I think it actually will be closed to vehicular traffic, but you're more than welcome to come down, enjoy your time at the park. Uh, there will be various other activities. I know Colleen is going to be putting out, uh, some pressers. Actually, we've already put out the pressers, but, uh, uh, there will, obviously will be more, uh, details provided on our website, uh, as well as we'll make sure and copy all the board on all of the details, so you can share that with your ward.
So that's Union Point, Lawson Creek, which one, both of them or?
It's, it's, it's both of them. There won't, there won't be the, the same amount of activities at Lawson Creek Park that you've seen in the past. The, the more of the activity stuff is going to be happening throughout the day at, uh, Union Point Park, but, uh, the Lawson Creek Park, we're still having the viewing there, so if people want to come play on the fields, enjoy their time with their families, throw out a picnic blanket, uh, uh, and, and, and picnic and bring a cooler and enjoy themselves, uh, then they can do that at our park and, and wait for the fireworks show to start. We obviously, actually will still have all the parking available at Union, uh, at, uh, at Lawson Creek Park as well as spill over, uh, at the church if needed, so.
Anything else?
That's it for me, sir.
Let's start with new business, Alderman Blackson.
Uh, yes, sir, I just reiterate what the city manager about the Fourth of July, wish, everybody is safe. Fourth of July, there will be fireworks, obviously, fireworks for sale within the city, special vendors. We want to encourage everyone to be safe. I'm sure Fire Chief, uh, is, is well aware of that in terms of, of, uh, children being supervised, if they're going to be playing with fireworks by, by adults. So very, very important that we don't have any, any mishaps and anyone gets hurt, so that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Taylor?
Yes, uh, this past weekend, um, the Primm Brook community had a litter-free Primm Brook, uh, day. I want to thank the mayor, Danny Outlaw, Commissioner Tyson, and a couple, I can't even remember their name, they show up everywhere.
Yes, I, uh, with, uh.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes, her and her husband comes out for every cleaning that we have, uh, litter pickup, and they was there and also Carol, Carol Williams. Uh, this is what we need to do. Uh, Governor McCurry started litter-free N C and we want to continue to do it in New Bern, and then if you do it in your communities, it is spread over to the entire city and then spreads over to the county and then spreads over, connect with Governor McCurry, uh, state program. So this is a great program that's going on. Uh, Mayor and Commissioner Tyson does it every week, so I want to commend them on, uh, outstanding job as well as Carol Williams for this weekend. Wonderful job. I don't know who I need to address this to, maybe Mark, uh, Matt, he, 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 see me. United Missneer Baptist Church, Mayor Outlaw and I, uh, went out there a couple of years ago and there's a piece of property that behind their church that they're still fighting on. Can someone give you an update on it? Where, where they are with their property? It's a piece of property they've been trying to acquire for parking spaces right behind their church, and I spoke with it last weekend and it's still reattacked going on. Haven't heard of it.
Uh, Alderman Taylor, you are referring specifically to United.
Missneer Baptist Church on Main Street.
Uh, I was there Sunday. I did not hear anything from the pastor about that, but now you're not confusing that with the piece of property behind West Street Christian Church? That they have been trying to acquire for years.
Nope.
Um, because I'm not aware, I was not aware that if that's the case, then we'll pursue.
That's a Leicester Strahan.
Yes, yes. We'll, we'll pursue that.
Yeah. Because it's been, I've got to, I've got to be frank with you, Alderman Taylor, I may be losing it, but I do not recall that ever being brought to my attention and if you'll be happy to bring that up to me, I'll be happy to.
I have that annual summer, you know, the day.
Festival, Fun Day, Family Fun Day, they always have it and they always bring it up and Mayor and I.
They are currently redoing their parking lot with a new surface treatment and, uh, they're going to need, they're going to need a bigger parking lot.
The right behind that church, not to the left of.
I understand.
That's the point they're coming up. So yeah, that's, it's taken here, we'll, we'll.
If y'all will get with me, I'll be happy to help.
The, uh, and you know I'm going to keep asking, uh, City Manager, may I will get a, get a, give me a speech real quick? Sidewalks, First Street. How we looking?
As I said last time, uh, we are, uh, we, we've submitted this with the M P O, uh, the M P O scoring process, uh, probably we will not know that. I think, uh, Maricia said last time, uh, the final scoring, uh, will not come out from the state until about October-ish, um, maybe November-ish, I can't remember, but once we know where that scores, what we're hoping for is it scores well because if that's the case, we will only have to pay, what is it? I want to make sure I do my math right this time, sixty-eight and a half percent. I think ours, our commit was thirty-two or thirty-one and a half percent, uh, that the board voted on for the additional funding to try to cause that project to score higher. So what we're looking to do is try to, uh, utilize some city funds, uh, as an offset to help with the scoring of the M P O because it is a D O T road and by doing so, whenever we add sidewalks, their commitment will be the other portion of that. So in a sense, we can get D O T to pay for approximately sixty-some percent of that project. So once we find out that scoring, then we will know how it ranks. If it doesn't rank well, then we, the board may choose at that time to, to hoe the road on their own and put in the sidewalks themselves. We have, uh, um, we're, we're already looking at design concepts. I think I've met, uh, the mayor out there, Mr. Kinsey, I think I've met you out there before, looking at sidewalk options specifically, uh, we met out there specifically about getting them in the Lawson Creek Park from our, our new recreation facility, but obviously we are looking to do the sidewalks for the full length from Broad Street all the way over into the Primm Brook community and then also from Broad Street to Lawson Creek Park on the other side. So that's where, uh, they will end at Lawson Creek Park. But ultimately, we're looking to submit that as part of the full project to the M P O so that if it gets funded, obviously it will be more state funds than it would be municipal funds. If we have to do that through our own municipal funds, if it doesn't score well, then the board will have to make that, make that decision at that.
Well, you know, um, I want to say this, um, I am the Alderman for Primm Brook and we've been working on this for about five, six years now. And the Lawson Creek project that we recently took upon, uh, started work on, uh, getting sidewalks there is important, but there's a big call, big demand on sidewalks to Primm Brook because that's a very, very, very safe, the hazard for the people of Primm Brook trying to get into the community by way of walking, bicycles, wheelchair. That's the only area in the city of New Bern that has no sidewalks at this time. And that's been on the agenda before the sidewalks started in News Boulevard, Glen Burnie, and now we're still waiting on sidewalks. Uh, I, and that, that's why I have an issue because it's going to come up again, we got another second part of that. The three of us need to meet with the Primm Brook people in the next week or two, City Manager. So they're going to talk about the same thing. So that's why I tell them I'm going to keep bringing it up until we make it happen because they were the first, that area was the first one talked about and they're the area that still don't have the sidewalks. It's the only part of the city that you can't assess by sidewalks. You can get sidewalks all the way up to, uh, Lisbon Avenue all throughout the city, but when you get to First Street, the sidewalk stops and there is a big issue there. So that's my point and probably say it again next meeting, too. Thank you very much.
We most certainly haven't forgotten and we're working diligently to make sure that we can get that project completed.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Happy, uh, Fourth of July.
Okay, the only new business I have, I have two items, uh, could you update the board? I know that you put in our packets the information on our present code with respect to pol-, uh, smoking policies on, on campus, so could you just give us a?
Sure, Mayor, be happy to. New Bern's code, like most other cities in North Carolina, prohibits smoking in public buildings, uh, government-owned buildings. Um, and we have a state statute that authorizes the board to contemplate prohibiting smoking, banning smoking in public parks as well. Uh, I'm in the process of trying to find some cities that do that. I, I hear that there are some cities that, um, have an ordinance that prohibits smoking in public, uh, open spaces, but, um, I've not located them yet. located them yet.
Yes, sir. You probably will find that certain parks in certain cities that are smaller probably are prohibited and larger parks like Lawson Creek or something, they might be allowed.
Wouldn't surprise me.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir, my pleasure.
Any information you do, the table would be good to have. The only other thing I have, I know that several board members have talked about this, and is the board ready to move and given staff direction to look at having a, like a hundred dollar litter fine in New Bern? Are you ready to start fining?
Absolutely.
Okay, so would you, it'd be a pleasure to the board to discuss that for just a second, is that appropriate to doing any business, but we're not gonna do any business tonight, we're just going, talking about it.
We can either, we can either put that in a work session as far as a discussion, but if I have consensus with the board that they wanna move, well if I have consensus with the board that they wanna move forward, what we'll do is we'll draft up the language for a ordinance amendment and bring that for you at our next meeting.
I do want to make, real quick, and it'll only take about thirty seconds, if that long, the mayor talked about himself and Mr. Tyson picking up trash and letting people know on TV, I think it was, in reference to cigarette butts, cigarette butt is litter.
Yes, sir.
Because, and I wanna bring this up, because I was driving to the right of a vehicle, to the left of a vehicle, and the driver thumped a cigarette out, well it came to my car and it burnt the grill up in the back. So when people throw cigarette butts out...
Don't feel too bad, I had a building on...
It is litter.
I had a building on Glen Burney drive it, somebody thumped a cigarette and the side of my building caught on fire.
See, it is litter.
Don't feel too bad.
I just wanted to make that point, I don't think, oh, it ain't litter, here it is.
So if the staff will move forward and my idea was about a hundred dollar fine.
Simple.
Does anybody have any?
It's not enough.
Well, be realistic, if you have a three hundred dollar fine, somebody's gonna take off work and they're gonna go fight in some town county, they're gonna get off. If they have a hundred dollar fine, they're not gonna miss a day's work, and if it's a big enough fine, they're gonna say, you know what, I probably ought not litter.
Vancebury has a hundred dollar fine.
So anyway, we'll zero in on the amount at later date, but all our friends out there that are very litter conscious, we think if the volunteers in this community were not doing what is being done, how nasty this city would be, and thank you so much for all of you are doing. And I am being told that the city appears to be a little cleaner, so anyway. Alderman Kinsey?
Yes, sir. City manager, on the fleet count, have you had opportunity to get any numbers on the fleet that we last talked about?
I'm gonna let Ms. Coller answer that, I think she's been working on that, I don't know where we stand exactly, I know we've been working on the fleet as far as the count of vehicles we have as far as our fleet, I know we had worked with getting some numbers with regards to emergency vehicles that we have in a situation to where we have to refuel them, so I know we've been working on stuff. I'm not sure that Matt has that number in front of him tonight, just on the spot.
We've had it on Kinsey when we needed to get that information too.
We've, like Mark said, we've been working on essential vehicles in the case of emergency,
knowing what we need to fuel and what priority, but we have that full list as well, so we'll get that together.
And another question, I seen a truck today, was out reading meters, and I asked the lady about the dumb system, and I asked her how do it work, and she explained it to me that when it cut it off, it turns the vehicle back on, it lets them know how long they've been there. And I think JR and I had a discussion a while back about readiness for the whole entire fleet, just not singling out a department and putting that type of, that type of thing on the vehicles there, because we've been having some problems, from what I heard through the grapevine, that it works. It works very well.
Yes, sir, I'm sure that doesn't come without a cost, but we have been investigating and see what that would entail.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir, thank you.
Yes, sir, Alderman White?
I have one, and it's about an event, engagement that that's gonna occur at United Missionary Baptist Church. It'll be July the 3rd, it's in honor of Ms. Sarah Ann Belle Collins. I received a letter from her nephew, I received a call from her nephew, I think it was yesterday, and he was talking about a confirmation, we don't really do that for this occasion, for that occasion that he won, so they're gonna have a letter that's gonna be read for her during the event. The event gonna be three o'clock that evening, from three to five. I won't tell her age, but she's well deserving of it, you know.
What's the date on that?
The date is July the 3rd.
At what time?
At the time, I was told, three to five. She is an old citizen and she's a sound lady, I mean her, I go back to her and her sister, they really control certain things with kids or teenagers, if yours cutting up, she can stop that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Odom?
Yes, mayor, a couple things, wanted to let John and staff know that there was a power outage in Greenbrier, I think the last day or two, I had a citizen send an email saying that they contacted the number to report it, and the lady was very helpful, very nice, and said it would be on shortly, and power was back on and restored in about ten minutes, and they called back to make sure that the power was on, so I wanted to let you know that, I certainly appreciate that type of customer service. As far as Fourth of July, I want everyone to know that Tron Palace is also doing something new this year. The North Carolina History Center, from 6:00 to 9:30 PM at the Baytown Commons area behind the History Center, there'll be live music with a band, hot dog, hamburger, ice cream buffet, and of course the fantastic view of the river. You do need tickets for that, I haven't heard that they've sold out, so I'm assuming there's still tickets available, so you can check that out online at Tron Palace. And last comment, along with the trash, I know we added the recycling bins downtown for a nice addition, but there's still a lot of area expansions without any trashcans at all. I know that from Captain Ratty's over to the East Front Street Corner Lot, there's no trashcans on, they're just on the corner, so in the middle of that, there's none, I don't know if we have the ability to put some in, but my preference would be to add more trashcans, the recycling bins are nice, but you know, there's no trashcans and we haven't really eliminated that issue, so that's all I have, thank you.
Any other, yes, sir?
In regards to the trashcans, I know Matt has had emails forwarded to him recently concerning pickup, what is our frequency for pickup of those new cans, any of the cans downtown, but also the new ones out there on the News Boulevard and Fleet Street, Pollock Street areas?
All of the trashcans that are in downtown area should be collected once a week. I think the problem that came about is some of the new ones that we have added in the recent month or two, you know, may not have been added to the collections list with the GDS who we contract with, so I've instructed staff, we've added that to the list, so that won't happen anymore.
Are they all picked up on the same day or is there a rotating schedule?
I think all of downtown, and Martin might be able to help me on this, I think all of downtown is picked up on the same day.
I mean, because if you pick up on a Wednesday and then you get weekend deposits, by Sunday afternoon, it's gonna probably be overflowing, so I just...
I think all of the trash in downtown is picked up on Monday generally, and there are times when we do have events that if we see, I can tell you that there's been multiple instances where there's been overflowing trashcans and I'll call Thurman's crew, because normally they're working throughout the weekend rather than calling somebody in for overtime to ask them if they'll go over and service it. But as we see them throughout the day, especially during tourist season, if I'm walking around downtown and I see that, or if you as the board are walking around and you see that a trashcan needs to be serviced, don't hesitate to call us, because oftentimes people don't call and let us know they are serviced on a schedule. I think during the tourism type season, they're serviced with a frequency of twice per week, and I think in the off-season, they're once a week, I know that's what it used to be, so. But Matt can check on that to ensure that our frequencies are proper.
Mrs. Stout, are you, are you comfortable with the frequency of those trashcanister pickups?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further business coming for the New Bern Board of Alderman at this time?
Mayor, we have a closed session to discuss three matters, need to give the board an update regarding State of New Bern versus Capri hospitality, that's pursuant to 143-31183. I understand you need to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to 143-311A6, and then we need to discuss an issue regarding real property pursuant to 143-311A3 and A5.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Taylor, is a further discussion. Seeing all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay.